And then we'll talk about graduate school, a place that you're gonna have. Somebody will.
Okay. I want to thank everybody for being here this evening and I'm glad we have such a great crowd here. And I think it's impressive that as many people are here to hear about issue three, which will be on the ballot on May 2nd. And this forum that we have here is informal, if you will. However, we'd like to make sure that everybody who has a question and would like an answer, we would ask that you just kind of stand up. You can either come over here to the podium, state your name, just so we have it for the record. But I'm gonna give you like a little preview of what it is that's going to be on the ballot on May 3rd. Or 2nd, I'm sorry. Issue three on May 2nd. Don't go on May 3rd because you'll be too late. As you know, the city has attempted, obviously in the past, to put this issue on twice before. And we've reworked it like three different times and in this particular instance, we've had Councilman Bilkey who came up with a recommendation that we put it on the ballot but give the residents of Macedonia a .25 percent credit, an applied credit. That would mean that at the end of the year, when you're filing your taxes, you would file with the city or with Rita, who collects for the city, and they would then give you back the .25 percent or give you a credit against the .25. Anything over the 2 percent. I know many of you may have questions about how that works and I'm gonna probably call on Rhonda, our finance director, to probably elaborate a little bit more on that than I can. But nevertheless, we're at one point, or we're at 2 percent right now. So as you see all of our signs through the city, it says what you pay today, you will pay tomorrow. Now, .25 of those, that 2 percent, will fall off in June. Now, that .25 was for the recreation facility that we have, that was on the books for 20 years. And that falls off after the 20-year note is paid for. All the revenue from that note then disappears. So we, we will have this year's collection and a little bit carryover for next year and that's why we have indicated, when you're reading any of our literature, that if this doesn't pass, that the potential for having to close down the rec center or really curtail it is going to be imminent. And I just want to say that, you know, I took office in November, well, actually December of 2015. When I came into office, I found that the finances of the city, because we didn't have a finance director for almost 18 months, I think it was, were, was not in good shape. In 2014 and 15, I think it was the treasurer's office that had issued a, or the auditor's office of the state, had issued a, like a report card on the city of Macedonia indicating that during the years of 14 and 15, that it needed to really look at where their expenditures were versus their income because the expenditures were getting greater than the income. So we should have obviously been alarmed at that time and probably should have gone to the ballot way back then. But what's important to really note, for those that are here and may have never heard this before, is that the city of Macedonia has not raised its real estate taxes since the 60s. Now, that's really important to note. And the only thing that the city of Macedonia drives its engine here, if you will, if I, if I can say "engine," keeping the city afloat, is the income tax. And that is a payroll and profit tax. It's currently, as I said, 2 percent. And it is what really runs the city. It pays for all of your city services, including your police and your fire and general administration, service department, et cetera, et cetera. We only collect in our general fund annually for, from residential taxes, about $1.5 million annually. $1.5 million is like next to nothing. I mean, what can you do with $1.5 million in operating a city of this size with as many road miles that we have, et cetera? So unfortunately, the only other avenue, as council has deemed appropriate, to ask the taxpayers to increase the payroll tax. Now, obviously, it's much more palatable than if you were to go out and ask for a real estate tax. The city of Macedonia would then have to put on a five or six mil levy, which would increase your tax quite a bit. I don't have that number in my head, but it would increase it certainly a lot. So council felt that by doing it this way was much more palatable. We have, at this time, about $20 million in city streets that need to be repaved. We have $7 million within the next five years to repave city streets. We have a rec center that is going to need operating costs and at the tune of about $450,000 annually. Without supporting the rec center through the general fund, obviously, we would have to either close it or curtail its activity weighed down. And I don't think that the residents and the 5,500 people that are supporting it right now would probably find elsewhere to go for recreation enjoyment. So the only other thing that we could do is obviously put this on the ballot for the third time. But we're here to tell you what the facts are. We're not here to blow smoke. The city's finances is an open book. We're doing everything that we possibly can to cut costs in the city, from insurance to electricity, to just about everything you can possibly think about. And I know there's been some rumors out there about, you know, the mayor wants to put a roundabout over at Highland Road and it's gonna cost, you know, $700,000, $800,000. Well, that's not the case. The real issue with the roundabout is that our city engineer put together some estimates of what the cost would be to put a full intersection in there with turning lanes, new traffic lights, and that was a cost of about $700,000. So we said, "Well, what else could we do?" Well, we could put a roundabout where you don't have any traffic lights, you don't have any maintenance, you don't have to signalize the intersection, and you put a roundabout in for $600,000. Now, you tell me, which would you rather have? A $600,000 roundabout or a $700,000 full-controlled intersection that you're gonna have to maintain from now and forever? So I think it's a good thing and it also then adds a, an aesthetic value, as well as what you come down Highland Road, it will slow the traffic down because that truck traffic is enormous that's coming out of Twinsburg and partially out of Macedonia. So they'll get to the roundabout, they'll slow them down a little bit, and then they'll continue through and on down Highland Road to Route 8 or wherever they're gonna go. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody had clarity on that particular issue. And there's one other issue. We had put on our five-year plan to put a curb cut out of the crossings. Now, it was in our five-year plan only because we wanted to identify that there was a need to do that, not that we were going to spend the money. We have been working with the state of Ohio and all of the property owners of Giant Eagle and Target and Lowe's and Panera and Great Escape and everyone in there to do an assessed project. What an assessed project would mean is, is that the city would be bonding it, putting it on their taxes, and then they would pay for those improvements over like the next 20 years. So it's not gonna be any money out of the city coffers to put a curb cut onto Route 8. But it will be, it is a safety issue, as we have looked at it, to getting that curb cut in. Because people that are going into the crossings will now have an ability to get out on Route 8 as opposed to coming back to Route 82 and causing greater congestion there. And if the property owners in there agree, and we brought the cost down, by the way, from, I think it was an estimate of over $700,000 at one time, we brought it down to, I think, around $500,000. And again, it's an assessed project. We got the state of Ohio to waive the $150,000 that it was gonna cost to get what we call an LA break. That's a limited access break onto Route 8. So it is now going to be free of charge to the city because it's being tied into a dedicated road. So I just wanted to clear up those two issues and any other issues that may come up or you have questions about, I'll be more than happy to expound upon them.
Yeah. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Maybe expand on where we got the number for the $20 million, the road repair and the $7 million.
Sure. First of all, the, that, that cost estimate was given by GPD, who was the previous city engineer. And now that Chagrin Valley and Joe Gelati is now our city engineer, he reaffirmed that the cost of doing these roads, by analyzing each and every road and the footage of roads, were put together by engineers, put the cost per lineal foot or per whatever, however you calculated, Joe, I'm not sure, but did it that way so that we would have an estimate of what that cost was. And one other point that I want to clear up, too, is there's been mention about the fact that we are now a part of a summit, or NERSD, which is Northeast Ohio Sewer District, and that we are receiving funds for stormwater. That's absolutely true. On an annual basis, I'm not quite sure, is it maybe a hundred and some thousand dollars annually?
Our cost share would be about two, a little over $200,000.
Okay, we're gonna get about a little over $200,000 annually. That money can only be accessed by the city when it has a project. So if we have stormwater-related issues, we have to submit an application. We have to wait for them to approve it and then we can spend the money. We cannot bond against it. We cannot use it for roads, no. It's gotta be for stormwater, not roads. So make that also clear because I think that's been disseminated into our community that, yeah, we got all this money coming in from NERSD. Well, that's not the case. You know, $200,000 a year for all of the infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure issues that this city has will be eaten up on one project. I mean, we have a project that's Guadalupe Retention Basin, which is gonna cost us 400-plus thousand dollars to get that fixed, which is impacting upon Berkshire and other areas in the Beechwood Meadow area. We have the bridge now, thankfully, we have gotten that funded. That's the Sioux Lane Bridge. We got that funded by NERSD, which is gonna cost, I think, in the neighborhood of about five, four, $400,000, Joe, 350?
No, Sioux Lane's a little bit less than that. We're looking at about 275.
Okay, so it initially was around five, wasn't it around?
The previous design, the cost came in at about 400,000. That was in December of 2015.
Okay. So we brought the cost on that project down and NERSD is picking up, I believe, 80 percent of that project or it may be 100 percent by when it's all done, but we had to provide partially the engineering, re-engineering of it. The engineering plans had already been done in 2015. And so we re-engineered it and made it a little bit better and that's why we were able to bring the cost down because it was over-engineered. So with that...
May I just make one comment on that because you brought up the issue and I think we need to clarify a couple things there. One...
You know, this is really a...
Hey, listen, go ahead.
I mean...
I'm just trying to clarify something you've just said.
Well, I'll give you an opportunity to do that, but really, we're here for the general public to be able to ask questions.
Well, because it was stated to the general public, but if you don't want me to speak, I won't speak.
Well, if you want to make a point on something, I'm certainly happy to let you do that.
Okay, thank you. When we talk about the 200,000 a year from, it's basically between 210 and 225 a year from NERSD for Macedonia stormwater local projects. We did have one project we applied for in that way and that was the Iroquois Run Project behind Sugar Bush and they approved that within about a month. The second point is the Sioux Lane culvert, the primary funding is, and almost all the funding is coming from not our Macedonia funds, not within that 200,000, it's coming from the regional stormwater plants. And I just want to be clear on that because the total amount of money that we're going to receive from NERSD is not simply our local government fund, but when they take a, take a local government fund and look at that, they also are looking at regional projects, which is their money, not our money. And they are expanding it in Macedonia where there are important issues like the Sioux Lane culvert over the Indian Creek and like the ledge North Bedford stormwater catastrophe. So there's more to it and that could be even a million dollars worth of funding that we could get them for that ledge road issue. So I think it's, be fair to clarify that it's not just that limited amount of money. Thank you.
It's also important to note, though, and Mrs. Hannigan brought it up about ledge in North Bedford, there's been a major, major sewer, I'm sorry, water problem over there with flooding. And that problem's going on for many, many years and there's been a cost estimate out there currently, and the number that was thrown out was a million dollars. So if we're getting $210,000, let's do the math together on that. I mean, that's, that's five years of that money gone, poof. But we've already got one project in the mix that has to get done. That road could crumble at any day and that's gonna be our priority. I'm a little bit hesitant because to date, we haven't got anything. They've agreed to things. I know the mayor's worked with them on all these different projects, but until I see it, it's hard for me to believe it. I mean, I know they say they're gonna do it, but until we have it, it's hard for me to say, yeah, it's not a solve-all for all our stormwater issues. And this town was underwater just last week and we all know what we all went through. My own backyard was a river. I was out with the service director trying to resolve other issues in town and it was just insane, the things that are going on. There's houses where there's ravines cutting through the front of the yard and they're so low on the list that it's embarrassing that we can't even get to those people. We really can't say that $200,000 is gonna solve all our stormwater needs. It's important to note, too, that this levy can also be used for stormwater. I think we have some urgent things that are gonna come up if this passes where some of those funds are gonna have to be diverted to these stormwater projects. Water on roads is a very bad thing. A road is supposed to get water off of it. If the water stays on the road, that's when they deteriorate quickly and we have more problems. So in some ways, it makes more sense to solve the stormwater issue before you pave a road. So keep that in mind.
Yeah. And one other point that I'd like to make is that what we're attempting to do with being 2.25 percent on the ballot is a Band-Aid. It really is a Band-Aid. The city is needing probably another quarter percent above that. So I want to make that very clear, that while we're gonna be able to get this passed and do $12 million roads immediately, that, that is not the cure-all for what is needed for this city. I also need to emphasize the fact that the local government fund from the state of Ohio to the city, over the last five years, has been cut by $630,000 annually to our city. In addition to the fact that last year, our income tax came in at 275,000 less last year. So when you take the combined of those two right there, that's a million dollars that we've lost out of our budget, okay? It's unfortunate that, I think, it's great that we got technology out there, an innovation of all computers and phones and everything else, but it's also causing an effect on businesses locating in the city and offices and other places because they don't need office space anymore. They can go to Panera Bread and set up an office right there on their laptop. So that technology, while it's great and everything, has really, I think, caused a damper of having more employees in a city where they're paying more payroll tax. We're not seeing that. We're seeing that those that have profit tax, which this 2.25 is directed to as well, that when you're in business today, you can certainly show a loss in your business and not have to pay that greater number. And we're seeing that in a lot of businesses. So there's a little bit of a turn that's going on right now and while everybody is indicating that the economy is all that great, it may be getting better, but it's not great, okay? And I know that a lot of people look around our city and say, "Hey, we got all of that shopping area and we got all that industry." Yeah, we do and thank God we do because our efforts way back in the day of putting in shopping centers and creating a good commercial base for the city is really what has saved us all these years. If we didn't have that, we would have been to the taxpayers a long, long time ago and you would have been digging in your pockets then. And thankfully, we have not asked you for a real estate increase. And again, I want to emphasize this point and I always hate to say this because I, I'm kinda knocking the fact that the city of Macedonia only gets about 9.7 cents of a dollar on your real estate taxes. The schools get 70 percent of that. And then the county and metro parks and library and everyone else get the balance of the 23 percent. And we have done an estimate, by the way, of what it cost the city of Macedonia to provide on a typical half-acre lot, that's 100-foot front, inch, 200 feet deep, how much does it cost us to provide services to that particular house? And it comes out to somewhere in the neighborhood of 20...
2,700.
2,700 or so dollars per home. And on the average, the city of Macedonia only collects about $300 in real estate taxes on the average, $275, $300 from a residential home. That's very little. I know that everybody doesn't understand that, but that's all we get. And you can't do very much when it costs 2,700 to provide those services. So where does the money come from? It comes from your businesses. It comes from those that have, the people are coming into our city to shop, comes from profit tax, from all of our industry that's in our community. That's why we're always out there trying to bring in new industry if we can. We're trying to redevelop in our commercial areas. So every time you see a new building going in or something going in, they're gonna start paying taxes, both real estate and payroll and profit tax and hopefully they're employing people and that's the good thing. So with that, I'm here to, we're here to entertain any questions that you have and give you an answer to clarify any issue that you may have as it relates to this issue that's gonna be on May 2nd. So with that, yes, ma'am?
I have a question about the concept of...
Yes, could you, could you stand up, ma'am, and just identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, I'm Rose Casmer from Chinook Trail. I have an issue about the procedural of the 2 percent and the 2 and 1/4 percent. The way, if the, the last time I read the tax law, what we're voting on would be to vote a tax increase for 2 percent and, or 2 and 1/4 percent for anybody working in the city of Macedonia with the concept of those that also live in the city of Macedonia will get a refund, okay? Now, I'm a computer programmer, so the way I would have approached this was to have all employers deduct 2.25 percent. So they would have this one tax table that they put in the 2.25 percent.
Right.
And then Rita, the collection agency, would make a comparison of the ZIP codes to where you work, to where you're living, and adjust that rate to 2 percent if you're a city of Macedonia. Therefore, the collection and the payment is all handled by Rita. But the refund situation looks to me like everybody's gonna get charged on their city filing 2.25 percent and then you have to go beyond that to get the 1/4 percent.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if that is required because that's what we're voting on or what the situation is.
Good question you have there. We have contacted Rita and we're trying to create a seamless situation so that exactly what you initially said, that when you file your taxes, they would look at the ZIP code if you were a resident and you were working in Macedonia, that they would administratively handle that. So we're trying to work through that. We are cutting edge in Macedonia with this new request that we have of our residents. So it's, it's a novel idea and Rita has never implemented such a program like that. So everybody's kinda watching what's going on in Macedonia because if this passes, I can rest assure you that many of the communities around us are gonna go after it the same way. They're gonna go and say, "Well, we're not gonna tax our own people anymore that live in Macedonia and work here or work elsewhere and that are paying, you know, 2 percent." You know, 'cause if you're in a community, like the city of Beaufort right now is going for 3 percent. You know, city of Cleveland, I think, is at 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2 right now? So if you work in the city of Cleveland, you're not gonna get a refund, applied refund in Macedonia because you're working in the city of Cleveland and you're gonna pay, and actually, you're gonna pay the additional 25 percent to them or 0.25 percent to them. And, you know, we give 100 percent reciprocity. That means that we have not taken away that 100 percent reciprocity. So if you work in another community, you don't have to pay anything back to Macedonia. Now, that was obviously an option that council could have done, is said, "Let's take away the 100 percent. Let's go to 50 percent or let's go to 25 percent." That could have been done. So I hope, I hope I answered your question.
Well, in a way, you have and in a way, you haven't. The question is further, has Rita agreed to do this?
Well, since it's a new idea, we're waiting on Rita to tell us whether they can implement it and maybe Rhonda could share more information, but, and she's more in contact with them than I am every day.
So they're actually waiting to see whether or not it passes because if it doesn't pass, there's nothing to discuss. So we have to wait to see if it passes or not. And then if it does, then I will be in contact with additional board members to discuss further whether we can do this or not. I was originally told no. So that's why the procedures stand right now as they are, which are always subject to change, that you would have to apply to the city to get the 1/4 percent back, but you would have to pay Rita the 1/4 percent first through the end of the year and then you would apply to get that 1/4 percent back. That's how it stands right now because we do not have a definite yes from Rita.
And what is your anticipation of what that could cost? Are you gonna have to get, hire somebody special to handle that during tax season or what do you think's gonna happen?
Well, you have until July to apply for the refund as it stands right now. So just depending upon when the flow of, I would say we're gonna wait and see what happens. We're gonna try to process it the way we can through our department currently. If I have to hire a part-time person, maybe I'll do that. But at this time, I don't know.
The bottom line, though, it's better than having to pay it, to get it back. So we're trying to find ways to make it easier, but, you know, we need the money to fix the roads. We're trying to find the best way to do it, you know, without charging our residents anymore.
Yeah, George?
Mayor, if it's all...
Yeah, George, can you step up front here just to, so that people can, and identify yourself, please?
Sure. My name is George Plowman, a resident of Macedonia for 15 years. Can I just have a follow-up question for Ms. Hall? So the refund request would be a separate letter that we would send the city requesting a refund or how would that work?
So if it passes, we are gonna create, if I have to do the process through the finance department, we would create an application that you would apply for the refund and I'm sure I would talk with the law department, I would talk to Rita to see, to make sure that everybody's in, on the same page, we're all in compliance. And whether or not I have the, depending upon the sunshine laws and the requirements of the public records request, whether I actually request a copy of your tax return that you filed with Rita or I just go with, through Rita and get the information myself. We're not really sure of the procedures yet because we have to wait to see, or I'm waiting to see if Rita will actually do the process for us.
Ms. Hall, I got a question for you. And I, I've been thinking about this since we, you know, put it on there. Is it going to be a matter of public record when we issue the refunds? I mean, that was one of the questions on Facebook, that once it becomes a refund, now it's a matter of public record for, for people to access.
Well, since we are on Ohio checkbook, the checks that are cut are gonna be on...
Right. Is there any way, maybe that's a question for the law director. I mean, I'm sure people do not want that information out there, what they're getting refunded.
The amount of the refund itself, would be subject to a public record request. If you get information under a tax return, that's redacted as personal identifying information in a public record.
So the, the check would be cut, but the name would be blanked out?
The amount of the name would be public record.
It's public record, but he's saying the tax return itself is not.
Gotcha.
And I agree with that.
Anybody else have any questions? Were we so thorough? Were we so thorough that you don't have any questions?
There's another point to be made here, too, that I think the number of affected parties, and I think you had a number, Rhonda, didn't you, of like 1,300 people? It's important to note that retired folks, who were the other ones that weren't on there?
Unemployed.
Unemployed.
Unemployed. I mean, there's so many people that, no matter what, wouldn't pay this. And the number of people that are actually working in our community and the ones that would actually pay it and get the refund, remember, we're going for almost $2 million here, and we're banking on $200,000 to give back. So out of that $2 million, $200,000 will be for refunds to give back to people that work in the community that we have to pay back. And I believe the number you had was very small compared to the number of people that live in town.
I don't have it with me.
I think there was 1,200 people out of the, what, 12,000 people in the community?
Really, I'm not, I'm not 100%. I can't answer that.
But the point is, there's a very, very small number of people that would actually apply for the credit and get it, where it actually applies to them where they would get the credit. And even on that, on, what, $40,000, what's the amount that would be paid and refunded?
How much would we have to refund?
Yes.
Hundred dollars.
Hundred bucks. So, I mean, it's not going to break anyone to get a $100 refund. I mean, that's really a nominal amount of money in the grand scheme, so.
Yes, ma'am.
When is this supposed to take effect? Is it going to be retroactive? If it passes, is it retroactive to January 1st?
July 1st.
July 1st.
July 1st.
So, yes, and then at the end of the year, obviously, then you can file it with your 2016 tax return. Other questions? Yes, Roy?
I used to work for regional income tax. I was the first programmer for five years. I wrote all the programs. And I know it's going to be tough for them. They probably don't want to hear. They had 28 cities, they have over 200 now. They're covering the whole state of Ohio, which is unbelievable. I can't even imagine where it would be right now. So they probably, it's like, wow, I don't know if we want to do this, but, you know, like you said, maybe it would catch fire, you know? And then all of a sudden, everybody will want it, and they don't have any choices but to do it. But about these checks in the public records, just like you said, about the refund checks?
Yeah.
You said that you could look at them public records?
Well, right now, you know, we went to the Ohio checkbook where we have now published all of our city finances and all of our income and et cetera, et cetera, with checks that are on there. And that now has become an issue somewhat, because I've now gotten calls from others that said, you know, I don't appreciate my check having to be published on the Ohio checkbook. Can't that be redacted, or can't that be removed? So we're trying to be very transparent here in the city, and so we're putting it out there, but it's not making a lot of people happy when they see their check being published out there on Ohio checkbook.
Oh, no, as far as the refund.
The refund, well...
If that's identified as a refund and it has your name, I could figure out how much income you make. Now, that is a problem.
Yeah.
You know, because now you're talking about people's income, and that's a, that's a no-no, you know? I don't, I don't know how you can hide that, because you're paying it out and you want to see that. You paid it.
Well, I think the law department indicated, however, that the name and what have you, now, the amount would be indicated, I guess, would that be on there, if you think?
It's similar to, some people may know or may not know, if you go to the county's website, in most counties in the state of Ohio, you can pop in your last name, or anybody's last name, really, or their address, and it'll pop up how much they're paying in taxes, whether they get a homestead exemption, a little description of your, your house, if you have a barn. There's a lot of information on that that people aren't necessarily comfortable with being online, but under the law, it's allowed to be online and it's available to public. So this is a similar situation. Now, your exact tax return information, if that were to be submitted to the city, that would be redacted to a certain degree to protect any personal identifying information from going on.
I know the tax thing is something else.
Yeah. I appreciate what you're saying, Roy, because that certainly would be a concern. Yeah. So I think, I think...
I mean, I know you have to account for the money you're paying out, you know? But, you know, once you get, put it out in the public, you know, who knows what's going on?
Sure.
That's the only, that's the only bad part. I can see when you're buying something, you have to say, this company, I paid them a certain number of dollars. That's fine, but, you know, I don't know.
Well, you know, we've always considered the income, when we had in-house income tax collection, that stuff was very proprietary. In fact, there was only like the finance director and maybe one or two clerks that actually got to see anything.
And me.
And yourself, yeah.
Right.
So did you check on me, by the way?
Tax review board. You know, I, I saw that, and I worked for regional, I know about all the laws and all the stuff, you know? You have to be very careful. Even regional income tax, people think, regional income tax knows how much you've got from the federal government. They know nothing. That's no. All they got, anything they get from the state of Ohio is, did you file a tax report? That's all the information they get. So, you know, that's the way it is. But another thing about this quarter percent, when that falls off, say this doesn't pass for some reason, if that quarter percent falls off, then we go to 1.75.
Correct.
Now, that's 1.75 for the people from outside Macedonia that work in Macedonia, correct?
Correct.
So how many hundreds of thousands or millions are we going to lose?
Well, you're going to lose a million dollars immediately.
This is what I'm saying. If the service has six people and all this kind of stuff, what is our service going to be like if all of a sudden that, that disappears?
Yeah.
You know, that's what I'm afraid of, you know?
Well, you know, that's, that's, that's a very legitimate claim, or feeling, if you will, on that if, if we lose that quarter percent and we go to 1.75, the city's losing a lot of money. You know, I, we're running a service department with 15 employees, okay? That service department, when I was mayor many years ago, we had 22 employees. And you need that many employees in the service department to keep up with the demands that we have in this city. Our service director is beside himself trying to stay on top of patching roads and grinding stumps and all the things that the service department does. We're overloaded, stormwater-related issues.
That's the man that was there.
When you put a crew out, and I mentioned this before, you put a crew out, just an asphalt crew. You need three trucks, one in the back, one in the front. You've got to have a roller, you've got to have, you know, guys shoveling, and, so you've got about six guys that are on an asphalt crew running down a street, four, five to six guys.
That's it.
So we have 15 guys. We've got three mechanics down at the, working on trucks and patching up and putting glue on them to hold them together that are in need of repair. We have one guy in the sign shop, so now that's four guys, with the six others, that's 10. So that leaves five other guys to do everything else in the city. So how do you get these things done? You know, you can't do it with 15 guys. The service department, when the cuts were made in 2007, I think it was, or '09, they never were replaced. You can't operate a service department and get the services that the residents need in this community with 15 guys. I'm sorry, you just can't do it. And we used to struggle with 22 guys, let alone 15.
Roy, to answer your question, if we, if it goes to 1.75, we will collect half a million this year, as opposed, this fiscal year, as opposed to a million from that quarter percent that expired. That's because it's ending on June 30th, that's why.
I understand that, but the next year...
Well, the next year, then, the question is, the question has always been, what do we do concerning the long-term issue? And the mayor is saying that he thinks we need 2.25%. And as you know, if you watch my video, I think we need 2%. I've always said that. The 1.75% is paying for the fire departments, you know, all of that stuff. It's not, it's already paying for all that stuff now. It isn't like it's going away. But we do have a long-term issue.
Well, to be a 2% is exactly where we're at right now, Roy.
That's right.
We're at 2% right now. And we're struggling.
Yes.
You can't do anything at 2%. So what more can we do?
We were, yeah, anyway.
And if this is possible, we'll stay at 2%.
Let me just...
I'm concerned that, okay, if you go to 1.75, where is, where is those cutbacks come?
Well, cutbacks are going to...
I see you talk about the service department.
Well, you know, I can't cut them down.
The thing you don't talk about is the fire department and the police department.
No, it has no effect on us.
I'll tell you what, I can ride on bad roads, but if I, I need the 911, and nobody answers the phone, you know, I won't be here today. You know? I'll be damned.
To clarify again, Roy, Roy, the 1.75% is encompassing all the city departments, with the exception of the recreation.
Yeah, but 1.75, the truth of the matter is, is 1.75 can't sustain the city. And we're at 2% right now, we can't sustain the city.
Well, I am not arguing that point, sir.
So where do you get the capital improvement dollars for the city?
You, you implementing...
I mean, we have $20 million in roads. Where do you get the money? Tell me where the money comes from, so if you go out there and you tell people it's wrong.
Well, watch my video.
1.75...
Right. I'm not suggesting, I've never suggested that, Roy.
I don't see any.
Yeah.
They're 2, 2.25, 3%.
Well, I understand they're all, just about everybody around our area is 2% correct.
Okay.
They're all coming over here.
Yes, there are. Maple, anyway.
All right, listen, Roy, let's, let's keep this down, because we want to make sure everybody here gets a question, that has a question.
Right.
Thank you, Roy. You got any more?
Well, I'll hold them out.
Okay. Jeremy?
Thank you. Jeremy DiBendicus, live over in Parkview. Just, there's a lot of pie charts and percentages of percentages and bar charts, and it's a lot of math. And so I like to try to do is just simplify it down to just the basics. And the way I look at it is, roads and safety services will get taken care of, right? No matter what, we all agree, everyone in here, that we're going to fix roads eventually. We're going to make sure that we can get places. We're going to make sure that we have correct police force in place, fire departments in place, safety services are there, correct?
Correct.
So there's really only two ways to continue that. There is issue three, which costs us zero as residents of Macedonia. And the alternative is, it sounds like, raising real estate taxes.
Correct.
Those are really the only options that are out there.
Correct.
So my question is, if you raise...
I would disagree with that, Jeremy.
I, I know, but I think, I think when we're stuck in the 1960s on real estate taxes, we've got nowhere else to go but down.
Well, but it has nothing to do with real estate taxes. It's consistent, but anyway.
But to keep all normal...
Well, you're making a statement on this.
In order to keep safety services in place and correct the roads, I can drive to Parkview through Highland, which is pretty bumpy right now.
Right.
We have two ways we can do that. We can pass issue three, and we can all in this room pay no more out of pocket than we do right now. Or we can increase property taxes, in which case, we all pay more. And what I, my question, it's not just a statement, Sylvia.
That's a statement, that's a, that's not a fact.
No, my question is this, my question is this, though. My question is, if we do raise real estate taxes, is that real estate taxes for seniors as well?
Correct. It's across the board for everybody.
Is that, is that real estate taxes for...
Everybody, just like any RSD is for everybody.
So a real estate tax would be on anybody who owns a piece of property in the city of Macedonia?
Absolutely.
Would have to have an increase in the...
And if I'm on fixed income and I'm just collecting retirement income, I'm still having to pay more, because we did not pass issue three.
Correct.
Or we could pass a different issue through an initiative.
Sorry.
We don't have another issue.
Well, but you don't know that.
I mean, yeah. So, don't be argumentative with somebody who's questioning.
I guess that's what I'm getting at, is that, is that correct?
He's making a statement, not his question.
Well, he's making a statement, because he's, he's free to make a statement.
Oh, of course he is, I'm just stating.
You have your opportunity at our council meeting, Sylvia.
So I think you answered my question, which is, my question is, if you vote no, then everyone pays more. If you vote yes, you pay the same. That's my question.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Unless you're an employee, I'm an employee in Akron, and so I pay 2.25%.
Right, so you won't get anything.
Just like 75% of everyone in Macedonia, I've worked somewhere where it's greater than 2% already, so it doesn't, it doesn't impact me. But I think it impacts a lot of seniors who are on fixed income. And I think that's, a message that's not getting through, is that if you're on fixed income, if you're disabled, unemployed, retired, your taxes are going, you're going to go, your taxes are going to go up if you vote no, because roads are going to get fixed. The police force is going to stay in place, and so is the fire department. We're going to keep basic city services, correct?
Correct.
I just want to make sure that, because there's a lot of pie charts and bar charts, and that's what it comes down to at the end of the day.
Well, let me, let me say this to you. We are marginal, right at 2% right now. Not that this is any importance, because a lot of people think employees of the city get paid too much, but I'll just say this, is that we froze everybody's pay this year. Everybody's been frozen. No increases in pay raises. But what effect that has on us, by the way, the reality is, is that police officers, safety force, fire department personnel, and others, service, if another job comes available in another community that's paying more, we just lost about two or three guys to other communities. Why? They continue to pick them off. We train them, they go to another community. So all of our efforts in keeping good employees here in the city that have knowledge to do the job are being taken by other communities. I mean, we lost two in our building department to Beachwood. I was going to call Miro Garden over there and say, you take another one of my employees, you're in trouble, you know? But that's really the reality here. They offer that much more money. And so we lose good employees, and then you're having to retrain constantly. You know, so you're going out there and you, now you're trying to find somebody that can fill that spot. You've got to go through the process of retraining. It costs more money than...
Well, it's, it's the same thing industry. I run a, a pretty large business for General Electric in the past, and if you don't pay at least more than COLA, cost of living adjustments, then that's what's going to happen. So I saw, we've increased maybe 2% one year, 1.7, 2.2. Those are pitiful compared to what they can make in other communities where, where the residents, you know, are supportive of this. So, thank you.
Yeah, well, you know, it's interesting that the city of Solon, they, they had a levy that they put on for, they got like a 20 or 25 million dollar slush fund there, or, or reserve fund, I should call it. And they put it out for just buying vehicles, and the people that quick supported it and passed it. So, I mean, you know, people have got to get behind what's going on in your community. This is your investment. This is where you live. If your roads are falling apart in front of your home, your depreciable values on your property is terrible. You go to sell your house, somebody comes along and says, why should I buy your house? That road's crumbling. Doesn't the city have any money to fix your road? Why should I move to Macedonia? So what happens? Your values of your property start to plummet. Think about it, folks, it's a reality.
Can I make a point real quick? Another point to that effect is that this stuff all comes at a cost, you know, the train and retrain and train and retrain. I bet if we put some dynamics to that, some statistics to, we could prove that that little bit of extra we may have paid would make up for that. And most importantly, I'm sorry, I'm not cutting you off.
No, it's okay.
One, one more small thing. Uh, it's important to note that there's five council people and a mayor. We elect a mayor to be the administrator of our community. Generally, they're the one who presents the budget to council, and council picks it apart, and we move forward from there. On August 9th of 2016, one council member of this board, Ms. Hanekin, made a proposal to, uh, go to her plan that she's talking about that she presented last Saturday. It failed four to one. So four other people here are saying no, the mayor's saying no, and we still keep hearing about one plan, and it keeps getting shoved down our throat. The reality is, the majority has put this forward to you guys to say yes or no. That's all we're asking you, and that, we think that this is the best laid plan for you to decide on.
That's inaccurate.
Okay. Just one thing, as, as you've made one statement, Nick, I'll just say something about that before I get into why I really came up here. Um, when you said that her plan failed four to one, yes, you're right, it did fail four to one.
Actually not.
But I believe the one vote that Dave Engel passed was because he didn't feel Sylvia went far enough in her, and it wasn't that he was...
He actually voted for the amendment in January, that would have...
Yeah, so I think, I think when, yes, it did fail four to one. However, three failed for one, uh, three of you voted to fail it for one reason, one of you voted to fail it for an opposite reason, so, but it failed. All right, but I just wanted to point that out. And, um, what I wanted to say, I just wanna talk about the 2%. Um, yeah, we're at 2% right now, but am I correct that a quarter of that right now is strictly for the rec center? Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's what's coming off the end of June?
Correct.
Okay. Then the 1.75 that is left is what the rest of the city has been running on. Now, a portion of that quarter percent coming off, I realize, was going to the rec center for some of its operating expenses, as well as paying down the, uh, the debt. All right, I do understand that. But that's the piece we're losing. Is that correct? We're not, the 1.75 is really what is running and has been running everything else. And also, last December, whatever the amount was that was being paid for this building, what, 500,000 a year, or a million, I mean...
It was 460 plus eighty.
It was 484,000.
Yeah, right, at any rate.
Okay, well, whatever it was, but, um, that's now out of there. That was coming out of the 1.75%. All right, so...
Can I answer that portion of it?
Sure.
Because out of that money, that payment that was made for this building, there's other bad debt that is coming due now as soon as this year, and that is, I believe, a bond that was passed in 2011, 2010, that is going to increase from 70,000 to 180,000. There's also a few, few equipment that we bought in the service department, uh, before I was on council, and something, you know, some things we bought last year. So that 480,000 is in reality about 210,000, is that correct?
Correct.
So it, it's a nice start. It's a nice start for a roads maintenance program, but unfortunately, it's not enough to...
Well, no, of course it's not enough for that. I, I don't have any argument with you there. But what I'm saying is that, when we're talking about the 2% that we have now, and without that, all these things that are being said will need to be eliminated, I just can't see where that's necessary, because we're, you know, we're, we're already running on the 1.75.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, that's great, but we won't have any money to fix the roads.
No, I, I, well, but some of the, but some of the roads...
We have to fix the roads at some point, and if that 1.75, we have to get, to get the money to fix the roads, we would have to lower that number that we are currently paying for, for the operations of the cities. That makes sense? So we would have to have, coming from, it would have to come from somewhere.
I'm not saying that doesn't need to at least stay at two. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not arguing that point at all. But I'm just, you know, it does need to stay at two. You know, there's no way for that to happen in this election. If, if this passes, we have the two and a quarter. If it doesn't, we have 1.75 until, and then we have November. We don't have just property tax to go back after. You can still go after income tax, and you can present it a little bit differently, which is one of the things that Sylvia has presented.
Right.
There may be other alternatives, there may be other things to add into that. That's where I'd like you guys to have more work sessions and hash this stuff out better.
Let me answer, just to, just to clarify, at the, at the 2%, it adds a million dollars. So if we do a capital plan that, that Ms. Hanekin suggested that we do, we fall really short on a lot of things. It just does not put enough money to keep the rec center running, to fix the roads at a proper rate. I mean, the money, the, 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 the dollars, the dollar amount that was given to us by the engineering was 1.2 million dollars.
Right.
You know, the money that we need for the rec center is 450 to 500,000 dollars.
Unless we change it.
The capital, the capital plan to get back to 2% is going to fall short.
But some of that for the rec center has been coming out of the general fund anyway, hasn't it?
You're right.
No, not...
It used to come out, let me, let me tell you something about all this that is very important. The, the rec center has been operating at a deficit between 350 and 400,000 annually. That is not something that I believe we should continue to support in the long run. I think from a point of view, there are many other options with that recreation center, and the idea that we need to close it in 18 months is not supported by the fact that we already are going to have this year supported in any case with extra.
Well, if...
And, hold on a second, and...
If it just doesn't pass, there's no reason to continue something that is not going to, I mean, it's a test.
Well, but that's not...
So if it's 18 months, or if it's 30 months, it's...
No, it's, it's more likely to...
There's not enough money in the general fund.
Well, that's right.
It's take four and fix the roads.
So we need to be looking at either better performance and a different structure to the operation, or we need to bring in a triple net lease of a recreation company who can run it. That's the real world, and...
That'd triple the cost.
And, well, no, well, no, we don't have to pay the cost.
Okay, we're not here to debate this. We're here to listen and answer questions.
Okay, no, that's, no, that, I know, the question that, and I just wanna make sure that my, my point was clear, because I didn't wanna get into any of that other kinda detail. But the one point, because I think what I'm hearing from, from both the mayor and, and some of the council are that things are going to need to be cut that are already being paid for in the 1.75%. Now, and that's, and, and that that quarter percent, I mean, I think it's being, making us, being led to believe that that quarter percent that would come off has already been paying for some of the things you're thinking of, of, of cutting.
Shirley, let me try to explain this to you if I can. I took office in 215, 216, uh, December of 215. When I got into office in 2016, we had maybe a hundred thousand dollars available in capital improvement dollars, okay? That was it.
Right.
A city of this size having a hundred thousand dollars doesn't do anything for you.
I understand.
Do you know that last year, we were patching roads and we had to go back and reappropriate because we didn't have enough money to buy asphalt? Okay? So we had to do those types of things to just stay on top of the general maintenance of the city, because we didn't have enough money in the funds. So where do you get this money from? I mean, you say 1.75, we're running marginally right now, this city is running at maximum, okay? Meaning that there is no dollars available for any discretionary spending. We're running very tight. And income tax, you have to understand, has dropped. 275,000 dollars last year, 630,000 in local government funds, no longer tangible tax coming into the city. Where do you find it? Show me.
I'm not saying that you don't, I don't, I'm not saying that we shouldn't have something, but I'm questioning, I was questioning why those pro, why there's programs that you say that you're gonna cut when the funding is always...
I already explained it. We have to fix the roads at some point.
Well, that's a different...
And so if we're at 1.75, in order to get the money to...
You gotta take it out of there.
We gotta take it from somewhere.
Yeah, okay.
We don't wanna cut anything.
No, I understand.
I mean, that's why we are saying vote yes on issue three.
All right.
Is because we have to have the funds.
Well, that's it, I just wanted to...
It's also important to say this, because you, you brought the rec center, which has been a, a funny point. I've been watching a lot of the comments on Facebook and things like that. Whether you support the rec center or not, it's an amenity of our community. In my mind, it's something that helps to keep our property values up. It's something when someone comes to the community, they could say, "Hey, you know, that's a nice thing to have." And by the way, it's, it's always forgotten, too, that that's also for our children. You know, our swim team swims there all the time. It's a good thing for those kids to have, and we can provide that service to them. The high school uses it all, the kids use it all the time. We're forgetting what's important. But the main point I wanna make is this. City of Twinsburg Rec Center, and by the way, no rec center operates in the black. And if you find one, anybody, please, send me an email, let me see it. Twinsburg Rec Center supplements their rec center every year with 475,000 dollars. Rexville, 877,000 dollars. Solon, 1.3 million dollars. And the best one, Strongsville, supplements their rec center every year with, get this, 2 million dollars. Angela, I think you've done a good job keeping our costs low. We know it's gonna cost us money, and we've brought that number down in the, in the tenure that I've been here. So step back and really take a look at what's really happening there, and where we are with our costs. To suggest to have an outside company come in and run it, how well did the golf course work when we first brought in an entity in to run that for us? Not very well. The first one's gone. The second one's in there, I don't know how they're doing current day, but...
They're paying us money.
But I'm not sure to say...
They're paying us money.
I'm not sure to say that that was probably not the best idea, but at the time, I think I even voted against it. I suggested taking a bulldozer over there and making it a park again, but I don't believe in running, bringing outside people in to run our... Excuse me, ma'am, please, can I finish? Thank you. To run our rec center. That's, that's the point I wanna make.
Right. Okay, can I make...
You know, one thing I wanna remember, that Mayor Long gave us that property. And when I was a little girl, before he's up, before he's up next door, we picked him up one day, Mayor Long. You know what he said he wanted for, he didn't have anything, he had the property to give. You know what he wanted on that property? Children to run.
Right.
Children to play.
That's right.
They always have picnics. You know what? It's gotta be gone. It's gotta be gone. 1.75? Can't, we cannot make it happen.
I, I, you know, I don't, I am not suggesting, I'm not suggesting that at all. No, I am not.
This is...
No, you know, I didn't, no, and...
This is getting out of hand again.
Look, I am, I am not against the rec center. I want the rec center to stay too. But I didn't, but I'm just, no, but I'm just saying, I am just saying that there, there are other alternatives, and we, you know, if we, if it doesn't pass this time, and I don't know which way it's gonna go, I don't know how, you know, I think, who knows? We'll find out on Tuesday.
Can I ask Angela a quick question?
No, no, just, no, no. Uh, no. I, I just wanna say, I am not against the rec center. I want the rec center to stay. However, what some, what the last person that was up here said is that the only alternative we have is to pass on Tuesday this levy, or we have to go for property tax. There are other things that we can do, you know, so...
No, you tell us.
All right. Let's, let's ask the questions. We'll give answers.
Okay.
Shirley, unfortunately, I have to debate the audience here.
Yes.
I guess the point I was making, Shirley, is that we did look into at some point that the, have the Y S, YMCA, but the biggest problem is, is they charge about three times as much as we charge our residents, four times as much as we charge our residents right now.
Well, this, yeah, really what I was up here for had nothing to do with, with that, but anyway. And just for the record, I've lived here since 1963, same house, same street. I want as much for this town as anybody does. And we do have our differences of opinion, we'll work them out.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Can I make one there?
Yes, please.
Hi, Stacy Suji, 11, Eric Clear Run. My question is this. There is no 2% on the ballot right now. There is 2.25, there is 1.75. So, let's say this 2.0 group of people decide that they wanna have this 2%. If they decide they're gonna vote this down and they're gonna win, we're at 1.75 until when? When does it get back on a ballot? What happens, this is a question for Rhonda, what happens to us financially with the state of Ohio while we sit at 1.75 waiting to get back on the ballot and praying that a 2.0 or whatever else passes? That's what I wanna know.
Stacy, Stacy, the answer to that is, we're going to try to work it out in council to go to a 2%, right? Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, please let me finish. You asked a question, and let me answer the question. When we're talking about that, we can also go to an initiative if the, we, Stacy, can you, I'd just like you to listen to what I'm saying, because you asked a question and it's legitimate. The, we can go to the ballot with an initiative from the city of Macedonia, from the residents to keep it at 2%. We do not have to keep it at 2.25 or 1.75. That's the real.
August.
Okay, let, let, let me ask you this. What difference does that make? I'm Vinnie Ventura, by the way.
I didn't get the rest of my question.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so if we go back in August, that is a special election, which will cost how much?
15,000.
Okay. And then, Rhonda, I'd like to know what happens if we have to wait until November, because we're not gonna pay for a special election on 1.75. What's gonna happen with us state of Ohio-wise, because I remember you saying at a council meeting that we would be put on fiscal watch with the state of Ohio. What is the timeline on that?
So if we don't get this passed in May, then we will lose income tax money until August, at least, because then you pass it, say if it did get passed in August, it depends on when we would start it coming up. So it would just depends on, on how much money we spend and how much we take in until we become on fiscal caution. You know, it's hard to say exactly. The state will probably still have us in a, like a critical, based on their little report card that they do. They'll still have us, you know, showing it's critical for that area, but...
Rhonda, Rhonda, we are, we are operating on the, the projection that we will go to 1.75% in our budget, are we not?
We are.
So there's nothing, there's no emergency...
However, but what it doesn't take into consideration, if there are road projects, that money has to come out of the general fund, and that's the only place it can come from.
I am, I'm not arguing that, I'm just saying to...
And then the general fund will have less talent in the year.
We're not in a fiscal caution or crisis. We are in, we had one item that was, okay.
Thank you. Who else has questions?
I don't have a question, I got a statement. My name is Vinnie Ventura, I've been very active in politics here now for the last year and a half. Okay, I think people are losing sight with all these numbers, okay? What this is, this is a quality of life issue, okay? It's a quality of life issue for each and every one of you. That's what it is. And anybody sitting here that thinks they can do more with less, I wanna see that, okay? Let me ask you this. Everybody around us is raising something, whether it's property tax or payroll tax, whatever you wanna call it. And I wanna challenge anybody in here to tell me you can buy the same amount of service or goods with a hundred dollars as you did five years ago. Thank you.
My name is Dexter Comets. I'm a resident in Cogga Falls, but I work here in Macedonia. Love working here in Macedonia, RVs on East River Road. I do notice the potholes in my quick drive through Macedonia. Just bought a new car and actually had to get out in McDonald's parking lot to check to see if I had messed up my front end, just turning off Route 8. But I do have a question for you. Say the levy passes, and I know that was July 1st, I believe that would take effect. You said a million dollars with that quarter. Working in Macedonia as a resident of Cogga Falls, I know that quarter of a percent would fall on me. Happy to pay it, I am. What projects would we see underway, and when would those start?
Well, as you drive around the community, we have signs of saying if issue three passes, this road will get paid. Well, there's about 12 million dollars worth of roads that'll get paid. I, on our website, we have all the roads that are in deplorable shape.
Sure.
And I can probably call on the city engineer to give you the names of the roads that you want, or...
It's in the handout.
They're red in the handout.
Oh, so sorry.
Yeah, so, but that's what we immediately will do.
Sure, thank you.
Which Cogge Falls? I think they're two. Are they two, 2 percent or two percent?
I thought they were higher than two.
I didn't see what you were... Two points.
So, it wouldn't, it wouldn't cost you anything regardless.
Hmm, right.
That's right, you would've wound up paying the two, the five back to Cogge Falls if you say it too.
Mrs. Tully had a question.
When I got here, it's six, someone walked up front, so I've been here the whole time in the back. I'd like to make one clarification. You cannot hire someone to run the rec center if it is a profit-working company, because by the mayor's will, only thirty acres was allowed to be used for generating revenue, and that has been done with the windmill. Thereby, no other piece of property in that park can be used for generating revenue. Second of all, there was a statement made in the paper today, or yesterday, about our wish list. Well, what do you call a list if you have things you know you need, but you have no money? It's a wish list. There is a capital improvement five-year plan. There was one put back together last year, and it was reviewed again this year, and we had a hundred and eighty thousand? Was that our number? We have no money.
Right.
So, talk to the police chief about the ten police cars that he required. Talk to the fire department about the piece of equipment they needed. Talk to the service department about the six trucks they need. We don't have the money. And oh, by the way, we went off this crazy list, and we have a plan that is there a way to do it through financing and not buying them outright, so that you have a plan that you pay for them, and then you get the new ones, and you have a way to pay for them ongoing. The problem is, we don't know if we have the money. That expired April first, so we can't do it this year. We'd have to look at next year. I just wanted to clarify those two facts, so that you know the facts. Thank you.
Let me say something about that. The plan has never been adopted, and the reason that they have many, many items in that plan, which are marginal in effect on the city and cost a lot of money, and the town center roundabout. The plan itself adds in things like this curb cut-in as part of the requirement of forty-some million dollars we need. You shouldn't be adding things into the plan you think somebody else is gonna pay for because we're talking about a tox, a tax to support that are, that we are trying to get to get the revenue to support it.
Why are you trying to confuse people?
Well, I'm not trying to...
Trying to confuse them.
You...
Listen, this city, I've been the longest elected official of this city. And back in the day when I was on council, we started back in the, I, I wanna say early eighties, we started to do a five-year plan for the city. And every five years, we would renew it. So, what we would do is, council and the mayor and the administration would sit down and say, well, we need this, we need this, and we'd put this into this five-year plan. We prioritize it. We'd say, what is a number one priority, what's a number two or number three? And we would do that every five years. Then we'd check off what we could do. And I could tell you today that there are things on that plan that have not yet been done, okay? And that's back in the eighties. Oh, shrug your shoulders. Do you have a solution for that?
Yes. What I'm saying is this, we need to focus our plan on things we plan to do with funds that we're receiving from our taxpayers.
It's easy enough to tell the taxpayers, hey, taxpayers, we're government and we don't need your money.
No, 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 I've not said that. Now, you know I haven't said...
This is what you're saying. You're, you're, you're beating a drum out there, telling the people, oh, the government doesn't know how to spend your money. That's what you're telling everybody. But in the meantime, you don't have a plan of your own...
I do have a plan, which I...
That can show how this city can operate and achieve paving twenty million dollars of road that is needed immediately, and I can only pave twelve million of the twenty immediately.
I get...
Okay? And over the next five years, I got another seven on top of that. So, you tell me, you add up the figures and you tell me how to accomplish that.
Well, what I...
There is no state or federal or any other funds available for those roads. Now, if it's a state or a county road, yeah, we could pull our permissive tax, which is only a couple hundred thousand dollars that we have in there.
Correct.
Big deal. What do you think that's going to do? Permissive tax, two hundred thousand dollars. Now, we can apply for issue two monies, we can try to apply for some state monies, but those are only on roads that are either state or county roads that we can apply. Residential roads throughout this community can only be paved by our general fund dollars, no grant monies available, okay?
No one is arguing those points. What I'm arguing is, the capital plan that you, five-year plan you keep referring to is not in fact simply focusing on those things we all agree on, but it has items in there that are very marginal in utility, and yet you're calling that a requirement and asking people to raise taxes to support it. I'm saying we...
No, we're not asking the taxpayers.
Yes, yes.
We are not, don't fabricate stories.
What do you think?
That is not, it's a five-year plan.
You're asking them to support those needs through taxes annually adding over five years.
You've already indicated that that five-year plan hasn't been sanctioned by council, although I can tell you that the majority of council would sanction it, okay? You would probably be the only one that wouldn't vote for it, so unfortunately.
No, I think we can be sure that...
Yes, Jeremy?
Oh, Jeremy.
I do have a question still, sorry. So, if we vote yes, look, there's a lot of batter going, banter going on, and, and it's great, there's a lot of debate going on, and we're all part of the same family, Macedonia. We've got people in our family that, you know, we might not like as much, but we all come back to the table and figure out how to make it happen. What it seems like to me is, if we vote yes, we have net 1.8 million dollars that our family gets for free. Because it raises two, and then people who are paying basically 200K get that back, and we net 1.8, right?
No.
How, how was it no? It's two minus point two is 1.8, correct? We're raising two million dollars a year...
Yeah, right, but we're me, we're raising it, I mean, we're, we're raising 1.8 million, but we're paying, according even to that plan, eight hundred thousand of it is gonna be returned because they, some, some...
I have, I'm just using this, I'm just using this chart...
No, I'm sorry, 200,000. We'll go back to these voters who would vote for it, but we're collecting...
Let's do the math together. We're, so I'll do the math together.
But we're not getting the quarter percent for free.
Improvement program, 1.2, so I'm gonna say 1.2.
We're not going down to 1.75 and people don't have to pay for it.
Plus point six for city parks and rec...
Would you let him have the opportunity to speak?
1.2 plus point six is 1.8.
Right.
Plus point two for the applied tax credit is 2.0?
It, it could be 200, it could be 300, it could be...
Okay, so my point is for, for free, there's not many times in life that for free, your family gets 1.8 million dollars. Now, my question, because I did have a question for you.
But that's not a right statement, that's an incorrect statement.
But it is, I've got two million dollars coming in.
No, 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 I see you see the point, but the fact is, they're talking about refunding the amount of money above 2 percent.
Right, which is 200,000. So, 2 million...
Yes, but that doesn't add up to...
Minus 200,000 is 1.8.
When he's talking about the total levy, the total levy is 2 million, but the, but the refund only applies to the stuff above 2 percent.
Which is 200,000. I'm rounding 190.
But, but so that it's, it applies to the 1 million that we're raising above.
We got a lot of bar charts and pie graphs.
You hear what I'm saying, Jeremy?
And we're getting a million eight without suffering...
No, 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 no. We're all gonna be paying for a million of that. What he, what they're saying is, the other million, we're going to refund 200,000 of it to taxpayers.
No, I'm not comparing it to 1.75, because you agreed that 2.0 is the right rate. I'm comparing it to 2.0.
This, this is your question.
No, you won't get 2, 2.0 will not get 2 million.
My question is, we're getting 1.8 million for free if we vote yes. If we, if we wait, if we wait and we pass a plan that is 2 percent, and there's no, there's no tax refund program, what does our net go down to? 1.8 goes down to, I believe it's 1.0.
It'll go, it'll be go down, go down to a million.
Basically...
A million.
A million.
You lose a million, so...
And we lose, we lose the million that we're not getting on the, being at 2 percent.
Let me see if I can clarify it. So, Jeremy, right now, we collect about 8.2 million dollars per year, add a 2 percent. And when we go to 2.25, we'll collect about 9.2. If we collect 1.75, we'll collect 7.2. So, it's about a million dollar point two five. So, that's, so, does that make sense?
No.
It's a lot more we get now for free if we say yes than later, that was my question.
Everybody's gonna pay 2 percent in this theory.
You can't get...
Everyone's paying that much because the situation is going to change when you're talking about income tax. You may have more businesses, you may have less businesses, you may have layoffs.
Good point.
You really can't tell if you sit with that close.
But that goes, whether you vote yes or no, that, that's the same. My point is, if you, our choices are one or two. One, for free, we get 1 million, 1.8.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, we get a lot of money for free. Or, we wait and we have to get a real estate tax adjustment, and we all pay, or we get less if we wait later on to have a refund.
Because you're getting it off the backs of the people that are working in this community. Now, you have to look at it from a person or a person contacting the business. If you're working in this community, you can get the same job a mile away, and you're not gonna have to pay that tax rate, where would you work?
But I own, I mean, I own two businesses in Macedonia, and, and so, I could go anywhere else around here, and I'm still paying 2.25. So, there's not a whole lot of places you can go where you're not paying 2.25.
So, can I ask you a question, since you're, you're conducting the meeting now? Would you rather have someone from Macedonia pay it, or would you rather have someone from Sagamore Hill pay it?
I, I...
I mean, it's a yes or no?
I plead for fairness, okay? I don't think, I mean, I'm retired and I work very little, but it'll be passed, so I'm actually not gonna pay very little on this. My son will, but I won't, okay? Because we're both retired. So, our income is not such a, it's gonna be passed. All right. My point is that I, I don't like this half percent, but I don't like it is, I like the roads. I dislike the roads being in such a bad condition, that that's more important to me than disliking this half percent, I mean, quarter percent that has administrative issues. So, there's no doubt in my mind that the roads need fixed, okay? I say vote for the thing, and then if the 2.25, or we consider that the administration is not, is wasting money, well, we're leaving you guys accountable.
Vote us out.
We expect you to put it in writing and put it in...
So, just to finish, because I know we're running late.
...how the money is spent.
The money is also earmarked, 100% of it is going to go earmarked to something. I can't remember off, off the top of my head what the percentages are, but it's earm, it's not?
No.
Read ordinance 1127, where it earmarks the money.
I read it, I read it.
So, the money is earmarked, 100% of it.
That's the problem.
Well, in a general sense, it's earmarked, because it's going to the general fund.
That are on the table. Look at the legislation that was created, it's online, and so, it earmarks where all of the money has to go and how it has to be spent.
Right.
Okay? You know, I, I laugh when I hear you make statements about if the administration doesn't spend the money properly, then vote them out of office, okay?
Mayor, it's, uh... Nobody's saying specifically that that's what you're doing. I'm not saying you're doing it.
The law, the law director has the, it's a percentage.
...for their operations, 12.9 percent road improvements, seven and one-tenth percent city parks and rec, and remaining 2 and 1/10th percent.
Just because you voted no for it doesn't mean it's not allowed.
Oh, you've...
Okay, thank you for that.
You're misstating stuff.
Anybody else have any questions? I know that we're...
Yeah, I have something to say. Okay, this is based on, this is based on the income tax. Are there any current plans trying to get more income tax...
Absolutely. Do you, do you know that just about every day, I am either meeting or trying to encourage others to come into this city, as I've done in the past, in bringing in hundreds of millions of dollars in this community? So, that...
Because I want to look forward to some of my problems, is that...
Well, we, at this point, don't have any, any, any statement on that, but we're always working and meeting with different proposals from different companies, you know, like we're working on the Marriott, like we're working, we, we just bring in Starbucks and Aspen Dental. We're working on a couple others on the crossings, to go into the crossings, two more commercial developments over there. We're working on a redevelopment at Highland Road. So, yeah, we're doing a lot of things.